First item of business is approval of the summary minutes. Gentlemen, are there any comments or a motion to approve?
I actually read them, so I'll move that we approve.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you for the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This item is approved. First, the next item on the public hearing items is number two, application Z-11-7, review of the permitted and conditional uses pertaining to tattoo parlors and body piercing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was a text amendment application that was initiated after the issue of tattoo parlors and body piercing studios in the C-4 district. City Commission felt it was appropriate to follow up and address our other zoning districts throughout the city since it was silent on how those were to be addressed outside the downtown area. So we had a preliminary hearing and discussion on that on December 6, 2011, and we asked you to provide us some input on what districts you thought they should be allowed to locate in, should they be listed as permitted or conditional uses, should there be minimum separations or buffer requirements, should they be allowed as home occupations. And you approved a unanimous motion to direct us to go back and prepare a text amendment for your consideration that listed these uses as conditional uses in commercial and industrial districts, and you were not interested in having them allowed as home occupations. And we didn't get any specific feedback on having a distance separation for residences and schools, churches, parks, things of that nature. So based on that direction, we've come back to you and we've attached a summary table where we've highlighted what the proposed changes would be by district. And I don't know if you have the ability to call that up, John. This is what you have in your packet, and basically, the C-2 district is our neighborhood commercial district. It's not real widespread as far as zoning goes, but to give you an example, the Countryside Plaza, which has Papa John's and Chiropractic Wellness on South Ohio, is a C-2 neighborhood shopping. And so what this says, if one of those storefronts, somebody wanted to put in a tattoo parlor and body piercing studio, they would apply for a conditional use permit, and that would go through you for review. C-3 is much more widespread. That's our shopping center district. Again, that would be a conditional use, as it is in C-4, C-5, and C-6 the same. We looked at C-7 district, which is highway commercial, and it's a pretty specialized district with pretty limited range of uses, primarily to reserve spots for highway business uses, and we didn't see tattoo parlors really fitting there, so we recommend not changing anything there. The same with I-1, which is an industrial park. Then we'll ask you for your response or feedback. We looked at I-2 districts and some of the other types of uses, almost any other. There's only about two or three items that are conditional in the I-2 and I-3 district, including salvage yards. But most any other type of commercial district, you could do an I-2 or I-3 as a permitted use. So our thought was to allow them as permitted uses in those districts, but just to ensure that, since they were permitted, that they would be buffered or distanced from churches or schools or daycare centers. We do have locations in the north part of the community where you have I-2 right next to residences, and that might not be appropriate, or those neighborhoods may want to have that built-in buffer. We have that type of buffer for liquor, retail liquor stores and things like that, so that 200-foot seemed pretty reasonable. And then the final amendment would add that to the list of prohibited uses in our home occupation regulations. So that's a summary of us taking the feedback we got on December 6 and trying to turn that into actual text amendment changes. And with that, I'd be open to any questions you might have about our recommended amendments.
Questions for the staff and commission?
Well, I can't seem to find it right now, but I was reading the report at home on my computer, and I saw the acronym LULU, and I can't remember what that stood for, but...
Locally unwanted land uses.
Yeah, I don't have any specific questions, but just comment that I appreciate the limitation of the permitted uses to just the ones specified there, I-2, I-3. I think that that was kind of what we were after, and then also the...
Yeah, we didn't put a set number in on the conditional use side because we figured you could exercise your discretion and judgment to... It's our job to bring those to your attention through the conditional use permit as to what's around it, and that you could use your judgment there, but in cases in those I-2 districts where you wouldn't be reviewing it to build that buffer into the requirements.
Dean, are there other questions or comments, gentlemen? Would you like a motion to approve these amendments?
I make a motion.
If you were comfortable with that, then you would be making a recommendation to adopt this as a text amendment.
Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt this as a recommendation to a text amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is approved.
So that will go to the City Commission to actually formally act on an ordinance based on your recommendation. But again, that basically addresses all the other districts in the community where they could potentially locate. So we've covered residential with the home occupation and all the commercial industrial, so you've done your due diligence.
Thank you. Item number three, application PDD-91C, an approval of an amended final development plan for College Park PDD.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application to amend a plan that actually dates back to 1986. And for those of you who've been around the community for a long time, this is a former Schilling Air Force Base housing area that was converted to private development, and it was actually purchased by Brown Mackey Corporation, and they were going to locate some of their educational facilities out there and then have surrounding housing. Not all those plans worked out, but one element of that that was built in 1986 was a nursing home that was part of the original, what was then called Wheat Ridge addition. And then that was done by local developers. There were industrial revenue bonds that were issued. Those went into default, and actually, for a period of time, the city of Salina owned the property, and Bank Four was the trustee for the IRB bondholders, and they found a new owner to take over the nursing home. Basically, we had a dividing line right here, and we had two owners with differing views. So what occurred in the north part was that a lot of these are actually owner-occupied units, and there's a homeowners association there, and all these private streets are a common area for the use and benefit of the homeowners in that area. There's also a clubhouse with recreational facilities there, but that's the primary distinction, is that this, the north area is kind of a residential community with common area. This is the layout of the south area. That was set up as College Park Village, and there's 120 living units there. And the plan originally was for those to be primarily for the elderly. That did not occur, but again, these are units that were built as airbase housing and have changed hands a few times. But this division occurred out there in 1990, and then the southern part was purchased by Dick Jensen, and he renamed it South Wind. And basically, Mr. Jensen owns all of this property except for a three-acre tract right here. But all these roads and everything in there are owned individually by Mr. Jensen. There's no common area or common facilities there. In 1996, this commission reviewed a plan to do an addition that was coming off right here to add some assisted living units to this facility. That was approved in June of 1996, but the owner at the time did not act on that approval, and so things have remained unchanged. But basically, this goes back to the development limitations that were set out in 1990, and it actually allowed for this to be constructed as up to 120-bed facility. It's currently set at 60 and licensed for 60, but the planned development district anticipated a nursing center with up to 120 beds. But the existing building has 32,500 square feet, licensed for 60 beds. There's a proposal here to construct a 10,000-square-foot addition that would add 22 beds. As I understand it, and the architect can further elaborate, I believe one of the existing rooms with beds will be lost, so there'll actually be a net gain of 21 beds. There'll also be a second nursing station added. And they've also indicated that the addition will be designed to blend in architecturally color and material-wise, so the building will look as if it was done all at the same time. But to just give you a bit of a scale, the plan would increase the size by about a third, and the site coverage would go from 25% to 32% of this three-acre lot. But it does fall within the limitations of the planned development district. The planned development district required that there at least be 41 parking spaces provided. We had an ALTA survey that showed, most recently, that there were 46 spaces there, and the applicant is proposing to add some spaces over here. And with the restriping and reconfiguration, the end result would be 58 parking spaces. We looked at this addition, and square footage-wise, it's not large enough to trigger a landscaping requirement. There was no landscape plan that was approved as part of this planned development district back in 1986. I think a couple of things we'd want everybody to understand is that all the utilities in College Park Village are private, except for some water lines. Particularly, one water line that runs up Georgia Avenue is public, and so the remainder, the water and sewer lines are privately owned, and they're actually owned by Mr. Jensen. So that's a little unusual, but despite that, the Director of Utilities and the Fire Department indicate that fire flows are good in this area, and fire hydrants are well located to provide fire protection to the existing facility and the addition. There shouldn't be any drainage issues that would result from this addition. We did want to point out to the applicant's architect is that because the lines out here are private, they're not located in easements per se, like you would have in a regular subdivision, and it does appear that the south end of this building, you can see this manhole here in the south end of the building, but it appears that the addition, this existing wing and then the addition out in here, will come quite close to this existing private sewer line, so they'll need to pay close attention as far as excavating for their footings and all, to be aware of the presence of that sewer line. This property is within 1,000 feet of a flood control levee, so that means that the city engineers will have to review their foundational plans. I think the only thing that's been an issue out here for the current owner to address is, again, and I may have you go back to a site plan or aerial, John, but this, you can kind of see this box here, but Georgia Avenue here is actually owned by Mr. Jensen. And so staff is aware of an agreement that Mr. Jensen had with the previous owner, the current owner's predecessor, that granted them some access rights, but it didn't appear that that ran with the land. So we believe that the current owner needs to get something in place that will be permanent access and run with the land if there was a change of ownership. Also pointed out that the address out here has changed a couple of times, and it's now got a Georgia Avenue address. We have reviewed this, and our recommendation would be to, that it does fall within the development limitations of this planned development district, and we would recommend approval of this amended plan, subject to the three conditions that we have identified on page seven of the report. And the third one of that is, we would work with the current owner to come up with a format that would work to ensure that we have guaranteed public and emergency access to the nursing home site from Schilling Road. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you'd have about the nursing home.
Questions for staff?
It looks like there's very little clearance to the property line, maybe 10 feet. Is that, I can't, I can barely read the copy that we have. Is that right for that zoning, or are we also looking at a variance on that side yard?
Well, basically, what the planned development district did, if you look at this, planned development district wide, it basically, the planned development district made all of the non-conforming setbacks conforming. So there isn't really a setback limitation. Basically, whatever that distance is to the property line is the setback. But I think this is the existing on that, is this the south side, John?
Yes, it is.
So this is probably your flagged area for setbacks and all, so you're looking at about that distance. Mr. Jackson may be able to tell you the actual dimensions there, but there's, basically, the way that these were developed, most of the homes and living units in there, and including this nursing home, don't conform to any setback. This is not 25 feet from this street. This is not 25 feet from Florida. So basically, it's a, what you see is what the setback is as far as the planned development district.
Other questions, gentlemen? No more questions from the commission. I'd like to hear from the applicant. Would you like to address the commission, please? And we would need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bruce Jackson, architect out of Marble Falls or Austin, Texas. I've got with me Bobby Ray, who is with Preferred Care Partners, who is the operator of the building. We have, one entity operates it, and another entity is the actual owner. But I think Dean did a pretty good job of explaining what we're doing, and if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Have you addressed at all the access easement?
Yes, once meeting with the city, and it's quite a unique situation. I alerted both Preferred Care and then LTC Properties, who's the actual real estate owner, that we had this situation. I said, on the one hand, I'm being told that the actual easement doc, crossover easement document, is worded such that it doesn't survive or doesn't run with the land, but at the same time, I don't know if the sales contract didn't address that and cause it to run with the land. But basically, made the owners aware, told them, you know, from my point of view, whether we're doing this addition or not, they need to make sure that they've got this easement in place, I mean, just for their own purposes. And I have, I really, I know that they are aware of it, they are looking into it. I can't say just what they're doing at this point. I've really gotten no feedback back. But I have told them that, you know, this process would, from my estimation, would go to a particular point at some point and would stop until they addressed that. And they have been telling me to keep going. So everyone's aware.
Okay. Dean, you mentioned for their use and also for emergency use. How would the emergency use be affected if there was no access agreement?
Oh, it would probably still occur, but this is one reason that we have lot-split regulations and lot-split review. Technically, and I don't know exactly when this parcel was exactly created, but if somebody proposed doing this today, it wouldn't be permitted to be a buildable parcel because it doesn't have access or frontage on a street. And the other difference was that when this was originally done, before Mr. Jensen became owner, the, all of the streets were owned by an entity as opposed to just an individual owner. So it was the change that was made. But I mean, physically, you can get that there, but also physically, Mr. Jensen could interfere, put up barricades, fences, whatever else he wanted to do related to that, absent some easement. So we would never approve a three-acre parcel that didn't have legal frontage on a street today. But this is an existing condition, so now is the time to formalize the arrangement with Mr. Jensen. And that would relate to maintenance of that as well. But you're talking emergency vehicles, delivery vehicles, trash trucks, the public employees, any of that. You'd want to have an access easement in place that guaranteed that. The other reason you do that is if Mr. Jensen would sell the property in the future, you want to have something that survives his ownership. So we had some templates that we developed back in 1996, and those were not used or taken advantage of, and they did something between themselves, and our review of that indicated that it was just between Dick Jensen and the College Park Health Center, but didn't run with the land in the instrument itself. So we would just work with the owner to make sure that that guaranteed permanent, ongoing access.
Certainly to the property owner's benefit to pursue this.
Oh, yeah. Dean, does that need to be, I'm assuming that it's implied or assumed, and so therefore it doesn't need to be expressed then in number three regarding emergency vehicle traffic under the staff recommendation?
Well, the actual granting instrument itself will probably be specific to that, but if, certainly the easement would grant employees, visitors, delivery persons, and emergency service vehicles, that condition three could be expanded to include emergency service vehicles to make sure that those are covered.
Other questions, remarks?
Can't you come in from the west off of Foxborough?
The two access points to this are Florida and Georgia. So you can come in here, and you can come in through here. But the purpose of that is to just to say that this, this right here is a cross-access easement, and it would probably behoove them as well to have this piece of Florida identified that way as well. But those are the two means to get in, and the difference is, these streets up here are owned by a homeowners association and their common area, and they're open to the public. It's just that they're privately maintained, whereas these are essentially privately owned by one individual. And there's nothing that says that they're anything more than private driveways. So this, the, it would just clarify that this owner of this tract here has the right to use this and this to get ingress and egress out of the nursing home site.
But the way you have it stated here, you're comfortable, that'll have to happen before they can pull a building permit?
Correct.
Okay, so that takes care of that.
And that, there's no, it's not directly related to their addition, but we are not, we are not supposed to issue building permits for parcels that are landlocked, and technically, this is landlocked, absent some sort of easement arrangement, so...
And I'm just going to share one more, maybe a bit of a concern and a question. I'm always very concerned about when we deviate from what would be the standards with new development. Certainly, pre-existing conditions, I understand, they're there. So I'm talking about the setbacks that Abner referred to. The new addition is also going to be in violation of normal setbacks. Is that correct?
It would be in violation of if you were building a nursing home that was abutting a residential area today, say the Holiday Resort that's up on, by the former Parsons School. That was required to maintain a 20-foot setback from the edge of the building to the nearest residential lot line. This is somewhere in the neighborhood of six or seven feet...
But that was there.
And this is simply matching that. But the planned development district that is in place, basically grandfathered in the existing setbacks, so as long as they're matched, this is not really a deviation from what was already approved.
And those setbacks that you're speaking of, you know, are land use setbacks, we've also got a building code setback. And so regardless of anything else, we're set 10 feet off the property line. But yes, part of the existing building is closer than that, but for the new, we're, you know, we have to deal with the building code setback.
Okay. Dean, who was notified about this? The Jensen's, and then how many property owners behind it that would be single family?
This is not a, this is not a public hearing item because they're not changing any of the zoning rules or limitations that apply to this, so this is not an item where neighbors would have been notified because the scope, the scope of the addition was not enough of a change from the original to have a public hearing.
I would guess if somebody's going to put an addition, that's not a standard setback. I guess I would want to be notified. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but if I'm going to put that in there, and it's less than seven, I mean, because if, what's the standard setback? Are we saying that's seven and a half feet now? I mean, is that residential seven and a half? Is that even seven and a half now?
This is around seven feet from here to here, and the addition is going to be 10 feet. So basically, what the planned development district said was, the existing setback is the established setback for the planned development district. So the minimum setback is the distance from here to here, and this addition is going to have a greater setback than the building does today.
And the original PDD had a 120-bed facility.
Right. The original planned development district said that this could be up to 120 beds, and it's only at 60 now, and this would put it at 81. So it still falls within the... So it still falls within the parameters of what was originally approved.
So we wouldn't be technically setting any precedent or anything for any future plans?
No. What, what we were doing is, we looked, we looked at the parameters, that there was parameters set that you couldn't cover more than 35% of this lot, that the existing setbacks were grandfathered in, and that it was permitted to have up to 120 beds. And as long as this addition didn't exceed 35% lot coverage and the setbacks were less than the minimum, or greater than the minimum, and we're still within the 120-bed limitation, then it's, it's simply a, a plan that you're reviewing for compatibility. But there, there was no neighborhood notification because this, this is an administrative change.
Are those housing units there to the south, are they rentals or are they?
Everything in there is owned by Dick Jensen, and he rents it. So there's only one owner here, and that's Southwind.
And Mr. Jackson, Dean said the materials that are going to be used on the exterior and stuff are going to be similar to what?
Yeah. Unlike in some cases, my direction in this case is to make it look like the existing building as if it was all done at one time.
Other remarks, gentlemen? Thank you very much, sir. Did your companion want to address the commission, or are there any comments from the public?
Mr. Jackson covered most of the points associated with this.
That number of parking stalls, stalls will fit with the, the staff that you have anticipated will increase by the 21 beds?
Yes, sir. We actually are exceeding the staff requirements on those parking places. So I think the requirement was for, what, 46?
Or something like that, yeah.
And we're coming in with, what, 58?
58. Well, in a situation like this, we do a lot of this. There, there are three considerations. One, it's a state licensed facility. The state has a parking requirement, given the number of beds. We exceed that. There's a city parking requirement that is a minimum. We, you know, always exceed that. But then, at the same time, we ask this particular facility, you know, do they have a parking problem? You know, what is their current situation? Because we take the opportunity, when we do an addition like this, to try to fix any, any existing problems. And in this particular case, they are currently experiencing no parking issues internally. And so we're certainly, I think, providing enough to cover the additional beds. So I think we're good.
Thank you, sir. Room's pretty empty, but I'll just say again, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this?
I'll make a motion.
Gentlemen, if you have any more remarks, otherwise the chair is ready for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve application PDD 90-1C with the three conditions as recommended by staff.
I would second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item, continued discussion of the public use zoning district.
Yeah, we have a couple items that we'd like to put on the board for you, just for discussion purposes. One of the things that we're talking about here is that we're talking about a wide range of, of uses from schools, in the, in the educational facilities section to, in the public section, you might have fire, fire stations or community centers or indoor recreation centers. So there's a pretty wide range of uses. And John, if you could scroll up a little bit. I wanted to do a, well, not that far. Let's see. All right. Okay. Right where illumination is at the top. Anyway, this, this was a text amendment that was done last year, and it was done in response to interest by some of our parent teacher organizations at our local elementary schools to be able to have electronic changeable copy signs. Most of them just have a static identification sign, and, and some of them have bulletin board signs with, with changeable letters. So the planning commission had discussions. And so this was done with the idea that most of these types of facilities, like our churches and schools and our governmental facilities, even our Y, our parks and rec facilities are actually in residential zoning districts. And so if, if this all, changes all occurred, then a lot of those, the parks, the, the school campuses, Salina Stadium, fire stations, things like that, would get remapped as, as public use district. So I just wanted to review with you these things, and I indicated to Mr. Kennedy that these were, these were set up really for elementary school sites that are, or churches that are set in the midst of, of residential neighborhoods. So your, your standard ground sign or, or freestanding sign in the front yard would be limited to 32 square feet. And what this is saying is, of that 32 square feet, 50% of that could be electronic changeable copy, which means that you'd, you'd have like a, a two-foot by eight-foot area that would be available as a message center. The sign would have to be set back 10 feet from the front property line. The sign couldn't exceed eight feet in height. It'd have to be equipped with automatic dimmers and, and no flashing or, or fluttering or blinking or any of those types of things associated with, with the message sign. Well, if you looked at South High or Central High, or you looked at a, say, an indoor recreation center or a neighborhood center, and you were looking at having that type of signage, then this, this might be a little restrictive, basically a two-by-eight message area and an eight-foot height limit. So I thought I would start there and, and give, I know Mr. Kennedy's been giving some thought to that type of signage at, say, at, at Central High or South High campuses, or if you imagined a electronic changeable message center sign, say, at Salina Stadium. If it was limited to a monument sign and a two-by-eight changeable message, that's probably not going to have a lot of information area on it. So I wanted to have, give you some discussion of that as to, if you think this, which is really designed for, for schools and churches in the midst of neighborhoods, if that is too restrictive, and if it is, would you recommend having a, a larger allowance, either based on being on an arterial street or having a certain amount of, of land area? What, what do you see as, as the appropriate measuring tool for, say, allowing more, more signage than this? To give you an example, the sign that is at the Bicentennial Center is there because that property is, is zone C3 Shopping Center District, which has a more liberal sign allowance than most of our school and church sites, which are, which are, are set in residential settings. So I think, Mr. Kennedy, you'd probably agree that at the high school campuses, being limited to that type of signage would probably not, not be meeting the needs of a, of a larger campus like that.
Answer your question, yes, I would agree. It's limiting, too limiting. But, but after our casual conversation in your office the other day, it occurred to me, I think we had a pretty extensive discussion about this and came to some recommendations several months ago about, in arterial areas, where it's arterial street, we're going to allow more of a message type sign like we have at the banks and, and I thought we already, I thought we already got past that one time. And even, I think we discussed the possibility of having advertisement allowed, such as what the Bicentennial Center does, in certain cases at our high schools and maybe Lakewood if we were on a front, on an arterial street. We're not yet, but should that ever, so I thought we already had kind of an extensive discussion about that and came to some kind of agreement as a group here, didn't we, Pat?
I, I think we did, and I think we talked to it being somewhat related to the, to the size of the lot that it was on.
Right.
And, and the speed of the, the arterial street. At south, I mean, you could have, easily have something in there eight foot by 16 foot. I mean, overall, and then half of that being a digital sign, but.
I thought we discussed it in terms of what the C-class locations were for the same type.
I think we, I think we got quite a ways in our discussion, and to the point, I thought we had a recommendation. But maybe I'm just remem, just wishful thinking, I don't know. I didn't refer, I didn't have the minutes. So I, I mean, we might refer, just as a suggestion, we might refer back to the minutes and see if we didn't get pretty far in that discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, maybe we just need our best recollection right now, and we can adapt it into this conversation if you remember.
My, to make a, make a summary, I think we pretty much agreed. We talked about the ones at the bank, we, down on Ohio. We talked about the ones at the Bicentennial Center. And my recollection is, we sort of left here with the understanding that would be allowed in those areas such as South High School and South, and Central High School, where they're on a major arterial street and large campuses. Right. And.
Something that fits the, the size of the, the scope of the building.
Right. And I don't think there was any concern about the limitations as they exist in our elementary schools, which are more, are our middle schools that are in the residential areas.
Could you go to the next slide, John? And we will, we will go back and, and look at those. But this is some, or this is an approach we found that, that we thought was kind of interesting from looking at signs and also looks at buffers the same way. If you substitute public use district for governmental district, what this approach is, is that instead of looking at the fact that the use is a, is a public or governmental use, it looks at what the most restrictive adjacent zoning is. So in other words, if, if you had a facility that was on, say, an arterial street and it had nearby commercial zoning or commercial development, you would look at what the, the sign limitations were on the adjacent lot. So if, if you were on South Ohio or you were on a, a busier arterial street or in a campus, instead of looking at, at the specific requirements, or having specific requirements for the public use district, it looks at what the, the nearby or adjacent district would allow, and then the public use is allowed to have that. So if you had a public use that was in a commercial setting, it could have commercial-scale signage, whereas if you had a public use and it had single-family homes on both sides of it, then, then you would have to have residential-scale signage.
Isn't there residential to the west of, of Central?
Hmm, yes.
Yeah, and that'd be the most restrictive, so that, that wouldn't.
Yeah, that wouldn't, that wouldn't assist in, in every single. But then, then as, as opposed to trying to draft specific parameters or guidelines, what it, what it goes on to say is that the, the city council or commission can authorize a sign that doesn't comply with that most restrictive district after a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission that a need exists for a sign in order to properly and adequately apprise the public relative to the activities being conducted on the site. And that's, that's basically approving the larger signs through a conditional use permit type process. It, so let's, let's say that you took Central High or the Salina Stadium there. It's got residential basically on, on three sides of it. So if you looked at the most restrictive adjacent district, it would be residential, but basically it would allow the user, or in this case, the school district, could apply to the planning commission that says, we, we need a sign that doesn't comply with that restrictive residential zoning in order to adequately inform the public about the activities that are, that are going on there. And then that would be done through a public hearing and, and a conditional use permit type process for that larger sign. That, that is an alternative approach as opposed to trying to adopt the perfect limitations or parameters that address all those situations. This takes the approach of looking at it on a case-by-case basis, and so the, the user would, could apply to the planning commission and say, we need something more than a 32-square-foot ground sign because of the types of activities that we have going on here.
That would apply to Kenwood Cove or the Bicentennial Center?
Right. It would apply to, to any types of those public uses that, that you would look at the, the function or the activities being conducted there and say, well, there, these are of such a scope that a, a sign larger than the limitations. And then if, if you had an elementary school that just was in a residential setting, they probably have a harder time making that case that they needed a taller, larger-type message sign. This is not to say this is, this is our only approach or recommended, but it's just an approach that says, as opposed to trying to have a, a sliding scale and have one scale for the residential setting and elementary schools, and then a different set of rules for the larger campuses, one approach would be like this, to say, if you're in a public use district, we're going to look to what's around you, and if that still doesn't work, then you can apply for a conditional use permit and justify the need for a, a larger, taller sign based on the activities conducted there and, and the need to inform the public. So you, you could certainly make an argument for a, a facility like Salina Stadium would have a greater need, has more activities and things to inform the public than you'd have at a smaller neighborhood scale. But that's, that's just a thought.
If you're tying it in with a, with a zoning issue, though, aren't you going to have to notify people in the area, the same as you would unrestricted use, that you're, what the requirements are?
The difference is, is that the first approach, we would kind of keep moving forward, and we would try to develop a set of ground rules that might apply to the larger campuses or public uses that were on busy arterial streets. And we'd say that in those settings, you could have a sign up to eight by 16, and it could be 20 feet tall. And then if you applied for a permit to put that sign up and it fell within those parameters, we would just issue the permit to install that because it fell within the rules adopted. If you took this approach, then if there was a proposal to put a sign like that up at Salina Stadium, we would look at the most restrictive adjacent districts, identify that those are residential housing areas. They would apply for a conditional use permit, the neighbors would be notified, and then they would have a chance to comment on the size, location, et cetera, of the sign. So those, those are the two approaches. One is to come up with the best set of ground rules that we can, and if you comply with the ground rules, you simply get a sign permit. Or the other approach is, for these facilities where you're wanting something that's more, doesn't meet those, the restrictions that are in place, then you would have to get a conditional use permit and have neighbors notified. So those are just two different approaches.
Quick question. I understand what the intent is, what the focus is on the sign here, but by the use of the term athletic field, you know, you're talking about, you know, especially the educational facilities district, I'm just wondering if this impacts scoreboards? Because that's a, that's a sign, but that's a completely different monster than.
Scoreboards are exempt from sign permits, and they're not considered signs. We had an issue a few years back where Kansas Wesleyan turned the back of their scoreboard into a billboard, and then it wasn't a scoreboard anymore. But if it's a scoreboard and it's directed into the stadium, it is not regulated as a sign, and you can advertise and have advertising signs and everything on it. It's not considered a sign. It's considered. It's considered a scoreboard, as long as it's oriented to the people in the stadium. If what Kansas Wesleyan did is they sold space on the outside of the scoreboard and then basically had a billboard on Cloud Street, and so then that ceases to be a scoreboard.
Are you looking for a consensus here, Dean, or an opinion?
Just, I mean, first of all, we have to go back, and if you think that you put some parameters together on that, we need to go back and look at that. But we would want some guidances to your preferred approach would be to go back and have expanded sign opportunities on arterial streets and larger campuses and develop rules for that, or whether there's any interest in you in having, say, a conditional use permit process for these types of public uses where the signs might be of a larger or taller size.
I'd like to, at first, and I apologize, I should have called because I thought it would, the minutes might, I mean, the discussion room before might be available. I really would like to look at the minutes before we make a decision, because I think we really did cover a lot of these bases. I feel we did, but I'm just not recalling exactly the discussion, because I, in fact, went to our school board, I think, and talked about our discussion and how we had kind of come to some consensus and it had to move forward. So I'd like to look at the minutes from the meeting where that was kind of fleshed out. The other thing, from my perspective, I see possibly Kansas Wesleyan, Salina South, Salina Central, St. John's, and I'm trying to think of any other, well, probably Sacred Heart. Those areas might be, it would be better now than one at a time to go to a PDD. It would be better now, in my opinion, to determine kind of the parameters we could all work from, and then we can live with it. If you go to PDD for each one, then you're going to have some discussion differing from Central to South each time, and differing from maybe St. John's to Central. And I just think we could come up, and I thought we did that, so I'd like to see that first before we kind of change direction here. And then certainly as far as elementary schools and our middle schools, but then our middle schools may differ a little bit from Sacred Hearts, because they're a little more of an arterial street than South Middle or Lakewood either one are. So middle schools and elementary schools, I can live with that PDD-type concept for those without a problem.
I would agree. I mean, if you wanted to take the more uniform approach and treat everyone equally than trying to have an established set of ground rules that would apply across the board is preferable, because otherwise, you, based on neighborhoods or neighborhood response, you may get one thing acceptable at one location and then not found to be acceptable at a different location. So we will go back and do that and provide that to you. The other item I had here, John, I think it's the next slide, and it was also in your packet, but I thought that this was pretty good, where it basically says that if you have a public use and it abuts a residentially-zoned district, a landscape buffer zone of not less than 25 feet in depth shall be provided, and that nothing can be located within that buffer area. And so it seemed like that might be a good place to start in terms of establishing buffer areas between these public uses and adjacent residential uses. What I recall from our last discussion is that you seemed to zero in on 25 feet as being a reasonable distance between a school or a fire station or things of that nature and the nearest adjacent residential lot.
That would apply to parks as well.
You mean a structure on a...
On a park.
On a park, yeah. If you had a shelter house, or restroom, or anything of that nature, or you had a school building or building on a school site, you'd have to maintain a 25-foot buffer between that and the residential zone. Which most of our elementary schools would meet that pretty easily today. So I think with that, we've got some homework to do to go back and look at what that previous discussion was on signage, but I'm reading that as you'd rather have some good guidelines in the ordinance and take it up on a case-by-case basis every time somebody wanted to do something that was a non-residential-scale sign.
We get probably from either a school or a parents' organization probably at least one request a month for a quote on a sign. And I can guarantee you that this is not a possibility, these are going to come in the future, it's a probability. And if we just get some definitive guidelines right now laid out, it's going to give everybody a lot better idea of what they can expect to build.
But I think what we have in place now works for Coronado, or for Cottonwood, or Stewart, or elementary schools like that that are surrounded by housing. What is not adequate is if the city had an indoor recreation area, or a neighborhood center, or an athletic field that you wanted to have some sort of event or activity signage for that was changeable copy, or certainly a setting like Salina Stadium where you want to have upcoming events.
Dean, I think with those two parameters, the campus size and the...
Being on an arterial street?
Do we have more than half a dozen, 10 of those examples? I mean, we're not, I'm not wrong to say it's a pretty small number.
Right. Yeah. And I think we, Mr. Kennedy and I discussed that maybe, you know, South Middle School or Lakewood wouldn't have the same needs to alert with all the activities and stuff that you'd have at the high school campus level. And both South High and Central High are on heavily-traveled arterial streets. So I will go back and look at that and see if we can come up with something that we, so we're not reinventing the wheel that we already discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, the 2011 Annual Report.
Yeah, this is there for your review to talk about the report that would be submitted to the City Commission, both about your accomplishments, what was done in 2011, and then some of the longer range and zoning administration goals. But one thing I thought was interesting, and I think it was probably attributable to conditional use permits, but we actually had nine more cases that were filed and heard by the planning commission this year than we did in 2010, which is some level of activity. I think the other thing that surprised me when I went back and looked at it, and I still may not have them all correct, was we identified all those meetings, but by my count, we had five meetings that were held related to BFR Metals case on West State Street, when you count regular and special meetings. So there was a public hearing scheduled in March, but there were one follow-up meeting in May, two in June, and one in July before the commission was done with that. So this doesn't necessarily reflect that. But we had, we've got the new data center that you see going up on East Iron that was reviewed by you, plans for a new USD 305 Operations Center campus at Broadway and Hegeman that you reviewed, and there's a new steakhouse that is coming up out of the ground in front of Coles, where you involved in that review. I think the other thing that's notable is that there were no new residential subdivisions that were presented to you for review in 2011. That, I mean, we tend to get those in waves. In 2009, there were no new subdivision plats for residential. In 2010, there was one, and that was Stone Lake, which was quite large. And then again, in 2011, there were none. So that indicates that the market is viewing the current supply as adequate. The other thing that we've highlighted for you is staff information. And as you recall, Alyssa Urban was our planning administrative assistant. She left in July to stay home with her newborn child. Sue's been filling in on an interim basis. And we wanted to introduce to you Crystal Norris, sitting next to Sue there. She's been hired as the city's new development coordinator, and Sue will be transitioning out, and Crystal will be transitioning in as far as keeping you guys on your toes as far as meetings and staying informed and getting information out to you. So that is a...
Need a lot of attention.
That's a change that's in the works. So we've highlighted some of the longer-range things. We're working, we continue to work on the getting accurate, updated floodplain maps. We've been informed that nothing is going to happen on that front in 2012 at all. FEMA has no money allocated for us in 2012, so that is...
That's just too bad.
Completely on hold. We've had some interest expressed about getting you some, maybe through steady sessions and just focusing on information about South Ohio between Magnolia Road and Schilling Road, what's in, what's not in, what's actually approved plans, and what's still a blank slate. Past commissions have been interested in North Broadway between Pacific and North Street. And then this commission expressed interest in getting some additional information about South Ninth Street between Cloud and Claflin, and what some of the redevelopment potential is there. And then we've got, most of the other things there are kind of in-house, housekeeping as far as zoning administration. But we have continued to work on efforts to get abandoned signs and mobile signs eliminated, especially in our busier corridors. So some of the things that you had stated in the past that were of concern as you was gateways, as far as recommendations to the City Commission, adopting a property maintenance code for the city, looking at that issue about, we struggled with about storage sheds on residential corner lots. And then other items that relate to the comprehensive plan was looking at the master plan for renewal of the Smoky Hill River Channel, having a utility master plan for the city, and developing a master plan for off-street trails and a city trails system. So we've tried to reflect those things that have been on past lists and actions that you've taken in steady sessions and all, but the...
Dean, can I say something?
Sure.
I'd just like to see us have a study session with the City Commission and face-to-face talk about some of these things. We've talked about, you know, sending them, having them form like this gateway commission out of some joint members and some members of the public and stuff. And, you know, we've got a new city commission with some new members on there, and certainly we have the same thing here with some new planning commissioners. I think it'd be a benefit to everybody involved if we could all sit down together, kind of see where the other group is at, and maybe get a feel for what they have support for and what they can fund. I mean, it does us no good to sit here and come up with grandiose plans if it's not something that they feel that they can fund. Norm Jennings and I were talking here at one time a few months ago and talked about that very thing. So I would just like to see us pursue a study session with the City Commission and get some of these things in face-to-face, instead of just handing them a piece of paper saying, you know, "These are the things that we're concerned about."
I would agree with that, too. If the commission is willing, it would enhance both of our groups' perspectives if we could get together and discuss, because we may learn of some things that are on the commission's mind that we're not really...
Well, then, what would be appropriate is, in that last section, the recommendations for the City Commission would be to add on there the scheduling of a joint steady session or joint meeting to exchange information and ideas and enhance communication.
Great. I agree.
Definitely.
Pass it along as a recommendation.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Are there other matters or questions or comments?
I just had one question. Can you give us any kind of an update on the BFR Metals case and where that's at?
Well, there's two things I know. There were briefs submitted and arguments presented in front of Judge upstairs in District Court, and there was a desire to get that scheduled and done before the end of the year, because I understand that Mr. Chris, the counsel for BFR Metals, is moving or has moved to Dallas, Texas, and there's really nobody I'm aware of that has stepped into his shoes to take care of that. So the next thing would be to see, we'll have to wait and see if the judge requests additional submittal of information, or whether they would render a decision based on those briefs. But if that does occur, I'm not sure who's going to step forward and respond for BFR Metals. But there's been a exchange of briefs and arguments, oral arguments in front of the District Court judge upstairs, but no written decision or result yet.
So we're still waiting?
We're still waiting to see what the judge wants to do with that. And they could rule in the city's favor, they could rule against us, or they could say, "We want you to submit additional information about this or that."
And since it was brought up, and I wasn't going to bring it up unless it was, but my assumption was that the expansion of their operation into the former Midwest siding building and location was all in compliance with city code.
They are not allowed to conduct any part of their salvage yard operation on that property, and to the best of my knowledge, they are not. But if they do, then they would not be in compliance, because what I understand they're doing in that building is recycling similar to what Images is doing with metal cans and things of that nature, as well as selling gas grills, and they have a truck scale there. But as far as expanding their salvage yard west, that is not permissible without a change to their conditional use permit. That would have to be approved by you.
Okay.
I do understand that they received a notice this week about dragging mud out into State Street again, so... But, yeah, if anybody sees car-crushing salvage activity of any kind on that former Midwest siding lot, that should be reported to us, because that would be outside the scope of their conditional use permit.
Thank you. We're adjourned.